County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, November 7th, 2018. You could rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Bonnie, roll call, please.
Johnson?
Here.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
Gore Filet?
Here.
Mayor?
Yes.
Crawford?
Here.
Commissioners Klaus and Lathref are excused tonight.
Okay. We have approval of the minutes from October 17th, 2018. That was a regular meeting. And October 24th, 2018, that was a study session for the budget.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve both minutes.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Now's our chance for first public comment. Bonnie, will you read the rules, please?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following Board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the Board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the Board until called upon by the chairperson. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone for first public comment today? Nobody. Oh, yes, sir. Step right up to the podium, please.
My name is Brandon Robert McMaster. I live at 3917 Zimmerman Road, Traverse City, Michigan, 49685. I'm here to speak on behalf of the inmates in the Grand Traverse County Jail for the conditions of the mentally ill, how they're handled, how things are treated, and how things go. It's my understanding clearly that there's a new psychiatrist being assigned to the jail to handle this situation. I feel that's not the direction that we should go. Other proper changes could obviously put the jail inmates in a better position.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We will move on to approval of the agenda. I have one change. Fifteen A in our closed session. We only need fifteen B. We will not require fifteen A today. Is that correct?
Correct.
A motion to approve the agenda with the exception of dropping fifteen A.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Mayor, supported by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. Move on to the consent calendar. Would you read that for us, Bonnie?
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission's staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single Commission action adopting the consent calendar. A, receive. Number one, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Minutes of September 20th. Number two, Grand Traverse Community Collaborative Meeting Notes of September 27th. Number three, Grand Traverse County Department of Health and Human Services Board Minutes of September 28th. Approvals. Number one, Commission on Aging Snow Vendor Agreement. Number two, Commission on Aging Surplus Equipment. Number three, Resource Recovery 2018 Holler License. Number four, Copier Multi-Function Device Replacements. Number five, Road Commission Request to Oppose Senate Bill 396. Number six, Health Department Local DEQ Agreement. Number seven, Veterans Affairs Committee Bylaws. Number eight, County Treasurer County Insufficient NSF Policy.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone from the Board have anything that they would like removed from the consent calendar and discussed?
B5, please.
B?
Yes.
Five. The Road Commission, okay. Anybody from Administration? Anybody from the public have anything that they would like removed and discussed? Or have any questions?
Can I also ask that we move that in front of the special orders?
I can do that.
That way?
Yeah, we can take care of it before that. Yeah.
That way Mr. Cook got leave and run to sit through all the...
Fair enough, because the special orders of business will take a little longer today. Okay? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I would move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number B5.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Wheelack, supported by Commissioner Mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. B5. Go ahead.
Right. The only reason I removed it was I understand you're retiring, so I wish, I don't know if we'll see you here again, so I wish to thank you for your service to the county. I think you've done a wonderful job at the Road Commission, and I think the roads in that show it, so... That's the only reason I pulled it was to say thank you to Mr. Cook, so...
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right.
Motion to approve that.
Yes, motion to approve. The Road Commission Request to Oppose Senate Bill 396.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Wheelack. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on to special orders of business. We have a public hearing. They open the public hearing first, right?
Yeah.
Get that right.
Yes, go ahead.
We will open the public hearing for approval of the resolution for the Hospital Finance Authority Revenue Bonds at 5:38. And Nate, you want to start us off?
I will. We've asked Mr. Eklund and Mr. Hepler from Munson and Clark Hill respectively to come and present this evening and speak to you about the relationship between the Hospital Authority and the County Commission, as well as how this bond initiative will be managed by the Hospital Authority. So, I'll turn it over to these two gentlemen.
Step right up. And so the people at home can hear you? You have to talk right into the microphone?
Okay.
Okay?
You can move it. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, but you'd have to talk right into it, or people at home can't hear you.
Okay. How's that? Perfect.
You can move it up.
I think it might move.
It does.
There.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you. First of all, my name is Mark Hepler. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Munson Healthcare. And first of all, I'd like to thank you and the Commission for supporting us for over 30 years, since I've been involved in being a conduit for us to issue tax-exempt financing. It's been a key to Munson Healthcare's success in our community and the healthcare that we deliver, so thank you so much for that. We're here today because we've asked to issue $63 million in bonds. That's a top side, so that's the maximum we'd issue. The money is primarily for construction at Atsigo Memorial Hospital, which involves improving their operating room and their emergency room. And it also is expanding outpatient services at Manastee Hospital. And it's also refinancing at Manastee Hospital and for Munson Medical Center. So it's a combination of all those packaged together. So that's the reason for the financing.
Okay.
And I'm Peter Eklund. I'm with Clark Hill. We represent the Authority. And the Authority was created in 1985. They've been working with Munson and any other medical providers that are within the county over the last 30 years to do bond issues, to help facilitate your healthcare and one of your large employers in the county. This is, I want to make clear, is not an obligation of the county. We are not coming before you for your limited full-faith pledge. You're merely a conduit financing vehicle. The obligation is completely the responsibility of Munson Healthcare. And they're merely, work through the Authority so they can borrow at a lower interest rate, because it's a quasi-governmental unit. So that's the benefit for the hospital.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Cheryl?
How are you going to pay it back?
Mostly sue patient revenues.
So we're...
So we have 1.2 billion in net patient revenues now?
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments, or... Sonny?
I guess the comment that I would make is, you know, that's right. The history between Grand Traverse County and the Hospital Authority is longstanding. You know, it was here before I was, Bob, so you even get an idea.
Wow.
Stone tablets.
But the point is, you know, when, simple things like when the new emergency room was created, you know, that was a $10 million bond, if I remember right. And the savings to Munson Healthcare and this community and the patients that go there was significant by them being able to sell the bonds through the county. And I think it's a perfect partnership that we've done for a long time, and it's benefited everyone that goes to Munson Hospital and everyone that works there and is a member of this community.
Bob?
Yeah, I mean, I think also when you're, you know, working in Manastee and Atsigo, I think it's nice, you know, we take for granted the healthcare we have available, so if you're able to expand services and whatnot at these other communities, I think it's a good effort, so...
Did I hear something back here?
Yeah, I was asked to research this a little bit, and this is a result of a law from 1969 that allows the county to establish the Authority. This agreement has been in place since 1985 with the county. So, I'm not sure how many times you've actually bonded through the county. I don't know if you know that, but this is not something that will...
Dozen times at least.
Yeah. But this is not something that we will carry as a debt.
Okay.
We also pay the total cost. We pay Peter's cost. We pay all the costs associated with the program.
Okay. So since this is a public hearing, we do have to open it up to public comment. If anybody has any questions for these two gentlemen, or any comments on the bond issue? Nope?
Yeah, so close the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing at 5:43. And we'll bring it back to the Board.
Madam Chairman, I would move to approve the resolution allowing the Grand Traverse Hospital Financing Authority to issue revenue bonds not to exceed $63 million.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Wheelack, supported by Commissioner Mayor. Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please, Bonnie.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
Gore Filet?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here to answer any questions and make it clear exactly what the relationship is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to the public hearing, which we are opening at 5:47. No.
4:44.
5:44. My glasses don't see that far. On our 2019 budget, we will open the public hearing. Does anybody else have any questions, anything else that we need to discuss? Sonny, you look expectantly like you might have something to say.
Well, I do want to thank Dean for providing me the detailed budget. Unfortunately, my schedule has not permitted me to get all the way through it, but I was able to read through the things that I was concerned about as far as the capital improvement and those kind of things. I think it's a, it's a, everything that I've read is a great document. And I appreciate the fact that it was put together well and in a timely fashion.
Anybody else? Yes, Cheryl?
If we approve this budget tonight, are we going to go forward with this Board's request to compensate that class of employees that we identified a year ago that needed a raise? Or some form of compensation?
There will be a closed session on the 21st to deal with exactly that issue.
The 21st of this month?
That's correct. We were expecting to have a few more groups close out or agree to the contracts this week. That has not happened. We've only had one agree, so there's not truly a need to have that discussion tonight, but the 21st is a, we will be having a closed session for that exact purpose. And we are prepared. It is within the budget, and all we need to do is determine when we're going to be publicly stating that, those changes. Yes, but we have that in play.
So the point is, it is in the budget?
It is.
The expectation is we will be going forward with that. It's just a timing issue.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Timing and details to come after. Okay. Yeah, Nate?
So since last meeting, we have not had any additional comments or questions about the budget, but Commissioner Johnson, at the meeting you asked specifically about the cost of sergeants and deputies. If, assuming starting wages, family health insurance, and a 6% defined contribution retirement, the deputies will cost $76,000. That's a loaded rate for wages and fringes, and a sergeant would cost $90,000. Again, loaded with fringes. The additional costs, cars, guns, tasers, rifles, that kind of thing would go with that, but that is an estimated price for each of those.
So, again, it's a public hearing. Yes, sir. Sheriff, step up, please, so that we can take public comment on matters of the budget.
Well, I'd just like to respond to the Administrator's comments. We were initially going to address the Board on those costs. We asked that to be removed from the agenda. We've been working on something different than that, and we are trying to get that number quite a bit lower. And we'll hopefully present that in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
We're trying to do something.
Okay.
To make it happen.
Is that to help form the specific team that you wanted?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, my only point was you asked a specific question. I gave you a specific answer.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Anybody else have public comment on the budget for 2019?
Move that we adopt the budget as presented?
Close the public hearing.
I have to close the public hearing first.
Close the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing. Cheryl?
I move that we adopt the budget as presented.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Gore Filet, supported by Commissioner Wheelack. Any further discussion?
Again, I know you've mentioned it many times, but, you know, this budget is a living, breathing document, so we do, if we need to amend it for the next Board, they can do that, so... But I think it is a good budget. I think they did a lot of good work this year in getting it done in a very timely manner and in keeping the costs down still, so...
Thank you.
Okay. Bonnie, roll call, please.
Gore Filet?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
Crawford?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. For budget for next year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All good?
Just thank you.
I thought you said hey. Okay. We already did the items removed from the consent calendar, so we will move on to departmental items. Facilities management, the jail remodel. Is that you, Captain Ritter?
Yeah.
Okay?
I don't see a hammer in his hands.
So, we, a few years ago, actually, it was two years ago, asked to move money forward this year to do some construction in the jail. And at that time, I had thought that we had requested the permission for the construction project as well, so I have to apologize because we didn't. You approved moving the money forward, but we didn't also ask to actually do the construction. So, we're here tonight to ask your permission for the construction that we have going on to apologize that we realized we didn't have that component done earlier. So, right now, we have the expansion of the medical office and a room for our psychiatrist, whether it be our current or future psychiatrist, but it provides room for better services for mental health and for medical services in the jail.
And also some observation cell expansion, correct?
Yeah, well, that's a separate project. So, we're asking to move money forward next year, and we'll talk about that project. This project specific is for the medical office and mental health office. So there's actually three construction projects. The ones we'll talk about later are, the MDIC project has a component where we're going to divide one of our rooms to add an additional conference room, but that's separate from this project. This project that I'm talking to you tonight about is strictly for creating additional space in our medical office and additional space for our mental health office.
How much money did we give you for that?
It was a little over $30,000. I believe the total project cost is about $34,000 for this.
And what about the other two phases you're talking about?
I can give you a rough numbers. It's, the MDIC is roughly $40,000. And then the construction on the isolation cells, which will help give us better observation in the two isolation cells, is roughly going to be between $35,000 and $40,000 as well.
So, but you're asking for both of them tonight? One for 40, and then one for 32?
Tonight, we're specifically asking for the medical renovation that's going on now, which is around $32,000. Joe Berry has the contract. Unfortunately, he came ill today and wasn't able to come tonight.
Okay, I thought what you said was you had the, you'd started the work.
Correct. We moved that money forward.
You just need permission to do what you're already doing.
Correct.
We don't need to give them money. We just need to give them permission.
The money was already approved.
The money was already moved forward.
I like giving permission without having to give money, so I'm okay with that.
Already did that.
But my question is, do we have any sort of policy or thought about how much more money we're going to stick into this facility, since we're going to build a new one? I mean, where do we draw the line? And do we just keep pouring money into this thing?
That's a good question. I don't know, I don't know when a new jail will be created. If we start it today, it's three to five years of a project, so this is something the Sheriff felt was important enough to get into play that when the mental health services arrives at the jail, that they have a place to be.
A key piece of this component is that discussion we've had about expanding mental health services in the jail.
Sure. I get that.
We simply cannot facilitate that in our current facility.
And I'm not questioning that. I'm questioning, is there any number that's...
I've been asking that question for a long time.
Okay. Well, and I want to ask it again.
And I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can continue to move forward with the discussion about the creation of a new jail. And I'm really hoping that becomes a priority early in 2019.
It will be up to you.
You have five new members.
Because the rest of us aren't going to be sitting here, so it will be up to you to keep that going.
I just think it, I think that it's fiscally responsible to say, this is where we stop, okay? I mean, we have this building that we're being told, we know, is three or four different configurations over the years, and we're just continuing, you know, we're pouring money into a sinking ship. And I understand the rationale for it, but it just seems like there has to be a drop-dead number, or a drop-dead thing, you know? Like, once we do this, we're going to just make it work.
I totally understand what you're saying, but there are also things where, when we recognize a deficiency that we really need to correct, to say we're not going to do it because in five, seven, 10 years, we're going to build a jail, I think, is the wrong approach, too. I think when we realize a deficiency, we have to address the deficiencies. And fortunately, we've been able to do that, you know, when you look at the security electronics, you know, we did everything we could to find a replacement or a shortstop until we do get a new facility that was $800,000 less than what we were originally being told. So we worked very hard to work fiscally responsible and find the best cost solutions we can to keep it running. And we'll continue to do that, but I think it's kind of dangerous to say we're only going to spend X more number of dollars in the jail until we build a new one.
Well, I also think it's dangerous and counterproductive to use numbers like five, seven, 10 years, we're going to have a new jail. Either we're going to have a new jail, or we're not going to have a new jail, because, you know, if we're going to keep pouring money into this thing, then we're not going to build a new jail, because we're not going to have the money. It's that simple.
And I agree. But, you know, and with all due respect, I've been hearing for the last 20 years the possibility of a new jail. So, we have to keep operating.
Sure.
One other issue that we're, with the attorney's visiting room, that's an MIDC requirement, and we have to be compliant within 180 days of signing that agreement, which we're going to do tonight. But to Commissioner Filet's point, future repairs, replacements, enhancements to the current building, you should consider what that building's going to look like once we leave this property.
Oh, I agree.
Because I'm fairly confident you're going to have a footprint of a jail here at this site. And I don't know that we should be doing a lot of reparation work on the eldest part of that jail. That is absolutely not necessary.
That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? Any questions?
And just in fairness and transparency, Captain Ritter called on the day that Hallmark arrived and said they're here to start breaking walls down. And we recognize that this was not, this box was not checked, so we did...
Don't you hate when that happens?
It's amazing how that happens. So, we did move forward and said they're here. They had scheduling issues, so we did approve the construction.
Do you need a sole move?
I do.
I sole move.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Gore Filet, supported by Commissioner Wheelack. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
There you go. You may continue with what you already started.
It's over.
Todd, you'll be coming to us sooner with the observation cell on that piece, right? Because we need...
Correct. I'm just waiting for numbers, which I hope to have by the end of the week.
Okay.
Love to see a schematic on that.
I can use that one.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Moving on. We have resolution adopting the 80/20 cost-sharing provision. The 2011 PA 152 for health plan coverage year commencing January 1st, 2019.
It's just an annual resolution that this Board has to pass.
Madam Chairman, I would move to approve.
Wait. Cheryl already saw a move.
Okay. Good deal. Support.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Gore Filet, supported by Commissioner Wheelack. Do we have any discussion?
PA 152 is very specific about how healthcare costs have to be supported by employees as well as governmental entities unless that entity chooses to opt out. And, you know, we obviously have determined a long time ago we could not afford to opt out.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to the Sheriff's Office. Compensation policy. Welcome, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Who else do we have?
Oh, I'm sorry. Tom Bensley, Grand Traverse County Sheriff, Lieutenant Chris Barshev.
Okay.
He's just going to pass out something.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, this. Let me first start by giving you just a little background, what Lieutenant Barshev is passing out. You know that some time ago, we were here in front of the Board because of misalignment, if you will, or unfavorable separation between the salary of a captain and the undersheriff's position. As a result of that, you realigned or readjusted the wage scale by making another classification to increase the undersheriff's pay, top pay, to 10% more than a captain. Now, I'm going to assume a couple of things, and they're on this piece of paper that you have. And number one is some figures for 2018, 19, and 20 for a captain's salary. I'm assuming this based on a couple of facts. The deputies have agreed to this salary-wage increase. It appears that the sergeants may also, and following that lead, I'm just assuming this, that the captains will follow. And additionally, on the salary side for the undersheriff, the same thing. And additionally, on the salary side for the undersheriff, the same thing, what's been talked about for compensation for non-contract employees. So you can see that from two thousand five through two thousand nine, that salary was about eleven point three percent more than a captain. And then it started to decrease, and in two thousand seventeen, that number was four point one percent. With these assumptions, the percentage difference going forward is going to be eight point three percent. Now, that can change, depending on what increases the captains, the non-contract employees may or may not get. Obviously, it could go one way, if the undersheriff's salary, non-contract, is increased more than the captain's, then the difference is going to be more. If the captains in their contract negotiations get a four percent increase, or whatever that is, but the non-contract people only get three, it's going to go the other way. These are just, this is an example of the problem we have at the sheriff's office, dealing with how salaries are established for captains and lieutenants, and our other bargaining units, and then how the non-contract employees countywide are established. So, a little background. So, the appointment to the undersheriff, when we asked for applications, we had internal applicants and external applicants. And in looking at, and talking with applicants, I find out that the compensation plan treats them differently. The, I feel, external candidate, if appointed, has an advantage in that there's an opportunity for that person to start an initial salary that is higher than an internal appointment. I think that's unfair, I think it disfavors the county's internal applicant. So, my attorney, Mr. Cooney, and Mr. Forsyth, after looking at this compensation policy, have said, this is bad policy. We have talked with the administrator and the human resources director, and they are both very willing to address the situation and make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. I don't think the sheriff's office, however, is unique in the issues we have had with this selection process. I think there are other areas in the county where salaries for employees are determined in different ways. So our office would welcome the opportunity to be a part of the solution with the county administration, other department heads, and elected officials. Thank you. Lieutenant Barshev?
Did you?
Yep.
Good evening.
Aye.
A couple months ago, Supervisor Chuck Corn, Garfield Supervisor, stood in front of you, requesting your support of a new Garfield CPO.
Let's talk about this other thing first.
Okay.
I thought maybe you had something to add to that one. Okay, so hang on. Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's item two underneath this.
Yeah, that is, so let's finish, let's finish this one first.
Yours is the first one for the compensation policy.
That, I'm just saying that...
Just a...
We have spent quite a bit of time with the sheriff on this, and I think it's appropriate that Donna Kinsey step up, and she, she has a good appreciation of why the policy exists, and I think it's fair that she have an opportunity to speak to that, and I can as well.
Okay. Donna?
I heard she was going to sing, too, but I don't...
She's not.
Okay.
No, we talked her out of it.
We hope Nate's not going to sing.
Nate's not going to sing either.
Not going to sing.
I have to keep some control here.
There's actually a policy in place that we have in regards to promotions within the county, and the actual promotion states that you can go anywhere from a four percent to a ten percent increase. It also states in the policy that you have to, when you do get a promotion, that you're going to go to the first band in the salary range, so it would be a level one. And so, we've actually had many discussions with the sheriff in regards to Mike Shea and his promotion, and if you look at the actual promotion that we're looking at doing, and the salary increase from what he's currently making, it is, from what he's currently making today to what he would be making, would be a twenty-six point nine three percent increase, which exactly, if you look at our policy, it says anywhere from four to ten percent. I do believe that the reason why the policy was put in place many years ago was because of the fact that, again, as I always say, a policy is only created for a reason. So, obviously, they felt years ago that there was a reason, and that maybe several of the other managers were just saying, okay, I'm going to give you two band increase, I'm going to give you three band increase, and so there was actually no guidelines in place. And so, years ago, they actually put the place, they put the policy in place and have established guidelines when it comes to promotions. And so that's what I just wanted to make sure that was covered, so that you under...
Okay.
So that we all understood that, because there is issues with, obviously, with an increase with Detective Shea right now.
Okay, Bob?
So how do you, how do you marry those two together, then, the fact that if somebody came in from the outside, they will start most likely at a higher rate? You know, you always want to try to promote from within, so how do we get to where we want to get?
I absolutely, I totally agree with promoting it, I think it sends, especially being such an employee advocate, it's a great feeling for, to see that somebody was promoted within. However, when you do go from the outside, and you're usually getting somebody with a lot of experience, or some kind of experience, so you're probably looking at a higher wage, where that manager can make that, can make that decision on where an employee starts.
So...
So, I do, your second question in regards to how do we get that to happen internally? Well, I do believe that we're, we are looking at it internally, if you look at what Mr. Shea's salary is today compared to where we are taking him, that is a twen, it's over a twenty-six percent, almost a twenty-seven percent increase, which is a wonderful increase, I think, for anybody to receive.
So, but he's going to, he's going to step one?
He's, yes.
He's going to step one in that new M-one category?
In the new M-one grade, which was created for the undersheriff. So that was already an increase for that M-one position.
Okay. So that would be in compliance with the policy?
It is totally in compliance with the policy.
Would you recommend we change the policy?
I would not recommend that we change the policy.
Can we move him along in those steps quicker?
Yes, there is also an other step in that policy that states that if a person is doing an outstanding job, that the county administrator can make a, if the manager goes to the county administrator, he can make a recommendation to go ahead and increase him to a higher step.
So we can get there, it's just going to take a little longer.
Absolutely, it may take a little longer, but then you just, it makes, it's a little bit work for the manager, because the manager has to go back and say, yes, this guy's doing a phenomenal job, or woman's doing a phenomenal job, and we're going to go ahead and we'd like to give him more money, and...
One of the things I always worry about is changing the policy and then finding these unintended consequences later on of going, oh, I didn't mean to do that.
Right, I think sometimes when you change a...
It happens to me a lot.
Yes, and I think sometimes when you change a policy like this, then the people that have already been within this policy guidelines, they're the ones that are going to be saying, hey, hey, wait a second, and it creates more animosity with the...
You know, you changed the policy for that one, but you didn't change the policy for the twenty people that got promoted ahead of that person.
Mm-hmm.
So, Cheryl?
I think that it's really important to follow the policy. Now, if the policy, you know, I mean, you just started, so, you know, I mean, I think it's, I think it's interesting that you've just started, and yet you already have a sense that the policy is appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
Probably because of the vast experience that you bring to the job.
Yes.
I'm just guessing, right? And, and I, you know, I know that what you do here is that when you don't have a policy, somebody comes in, and they're somebody's buddy, and they get a great big fat juicy slice of pie, and somebody who's been there schlagging along every day says, what up with that, right? And, and the only way to prevent that is to have a policy and to enforce it.
Mm-hmm.
So I, you know, I'm fully supportive of following the policy.
I don't think that it's out of line with other policies, I know other places that I've worked, I've been promoted, my husband has actually turned down promotions for that reason.
Mm-hmm.
Because then there was a joke where he worked at one point where they said, well, in order to get that, you got to leave for a year, and then you got to come back, and then you get hired and hired, and that's just, that's kind of the way it is, whether it's government or whether it's private. I mean, that, it's a common policy.
Absolutely.
So it's not like we are out of the ordinary at all.
And it isn't like you don't have the ability to rise, you know? You're only, you're really only prohibited based on your willingness to...
To excel at your position.
Learn the job and accelerate and show what you can do, so...
So best-case scenario, he, have you accepted the position already?
I, yes, I've accepted this.
Okay, so he starts at step one.
Mm-hmm.
We accelerate, provided sheriff says yep, to step two. Okay, so at step one, going from here to step one, he's going to get ten percent.
No, he's going to get twenty-six point nine.
He's still getting the twenty-six, okay.
Yes, yeah.
I think that's the piece that I was a little confused about, because the policy talks about a ten percent raise.
Yes.
But the recommended salary for the position is at twenty-six percent, and I was trying to figure out how, when the policy specifically said ten percent, how we were getting to the twenty-six.
Because we now have the M-one category, which is a brand-new category.
Yeah, correct.
And it's the first step that fits that four to ten percent.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, I guess I was confused.
But it, yeah, but it is, it is actually not within the commissioner's sort of purview to decide on those steps, and when that happens, that's going to be between the sheriff and the administration.
Yep.
For them to do that. But as far as the policy is concerned, I think it's pretty obvious we're not really interested in changing the policy, because I don't think there's anything wrong with it, actually.
I mean, I'm all for getting everybody the much as we can, but I hate to change policies for a one-time situation, and then you end up, you know, again, something's going to happen, so...
Well, I think we created the M-one category realizing that the responsibilities of this position were significantly different than anything that we were describing in our current staffing plan.
Right.
And I think that's why we created that category, and I think it makes sense to continue to follow that.
And with having the discretion to move them up, you know, there's ways to go there, so...
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, I think we're going to move on.
You don't...
Yes, sir, you may.
I wasn't looking to go to this discussion tonight, but since we are there, she's absolutely right in that the promotion policy states exactly what you said, for an internal applicant or employee. However, with a new appointment, it says, appointments above the minimum rate may be authorized if the department head submits reasons in writing to the county administrator, detailing background, experience, and things of that nature, okay? That external applicant has the opportunity, when they first start, to be placed in any of the steps, okay?
Mm-hmm.
The internal applicant does not have that opportunity, okay?
Yes.
Does not have that opportunity, okay?
Yes, yep.
So, that was, that was my point in, when I said it was unfair, okay? Now, as far as the progression and the pay, and, you know, when he, when he gets there, starting at step one, Mr. Shea will receive thirteen point four percent less than a captain. In the next year, it's nine percent less, in the next year, it's four percent less, in the next year, it's one percent less, and moving forward, when he gets to step five, he finally gets more than a captain, three and a half percent, and at step six, after six years or five years, now he's at the level which the board said should be at, at our last discussion. So, the point is that an external, an external applicant has an opportunity to start at step two or three, the internal applicant with the same qualifications does not have that opportunity. That was, that was my issue.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions, or anything further? Okay, we will move on. Now, Lieutenant Barshev?
Apologize for talking out of turn.
Although, that's okay.
As I was stating, a couple months ago, Supervisor Corn was in front of you, Captain Clark, requesting support for community officer for Garfield Township, and you approved that, so I want to say thank you for understanding the importance of our community policing program and those relationships. And then during that same meeting, Commissioner Gore Falet asked, or stated, it would be nice to know a comparison between Garfield Township, how we police that, and how the city might do the city. You know, granted, it's not apples-to-apples, because the departments are logistically different. So, in a four-page document, which is in front of you, I put together the best response that I could come up with, and I don't want to take all night to crunch numbers, but I just like to go through it briefly, and then, in the back page is my contact information, so if there's other questions that come up after tonight, you know, I ask you to contact me, and we can discuss it further. So Garfield Township contracts for thirteen total officers, including myself, eight patrol officers, three community police officers, and a detective. And the way it's set up, the eight patrol deputies and the three community officers are the ones who handle the calls for service. So if a citizen picks up the phone, and they want an officer, they're the ones who go. I will go in a support role, but my role is, you know, mainly administrative and whatnot. So when you compare it to the city department, who has a thirty-one total officers, to include administration supervisors, I would, to make it apples-to-apples, I would say there's sixteen patrol officers, plus their two school resource officers, taking the total to eighteen, are the ones who are going to respond to calls for service. So, you know, they have several more than we do, when you look at those numbers. There may be a situation where the county or the state police may go in the city to support them on a call for service. Pretty rare for the city to come into Garfield and help us out, but the state police on occasion do come and help us out. I kind of look at it as a wash, we all kind of help each other out. Geography, you can see that Garfield Township is like three times as big as the city in square mileage. Garfield Township makes up about five percent of the total land of Grand Traverse County, which is about one hundred, six hundred and one square miles. Demographics, you can see that the population in Garfield Township is just a little bit bigger than the city, expected to be roughly seventeen thousand and some change, and, well, right now. So that was a little bit of information to say how we're structured, and if you turn to page two, I reached out to the prosecutor's office to get an idea of what type of cases each agency sends to their office for review, and they provided me with twenty sixteen, seventeen, and January eighteen to September seventeenth. And if you look at the tables, they're broken down by Traverse City Police Department, cases handled in the city, Michigan State Police in the city, Grand Traverse County Sheriff, cases in the city, Grand Traverse County and Garfield Township, and Michigan State Police in Garfield Township. I just wanted you to have a good understanding of what agencies are doing what in which areas. Yes.
Okay, so I live in Garfield Township.
I do, too, that makes two of us.
And I'm looking at these numbers, and I want to say that I'm really, really hopeful that these really high numbers are because of, like, Meyer and the mall, I mean, eight hundred and sixty cases, as opposed to fifty-two in the city.
You know, Gar, well, the thing of it is, is as we, as we go further on in this document, you'll see that the major crimes are not over the top. It's not like we live in a dangerous area. I think because we have a mixture of residential business, you know, we get our share of retail frauds that the city does not. I can tell you at the mall, and Walmart, Myers, and that would drive those numbers up. And, you know, there's a lot of activities that occur in Garfield Township that require a response by a police officer, not necessarily to handle a crime, but just to sort out a situation that doesn't reach the level of a crime, and that seems to happen a lot, a non-criminal matter, is what we call that.
What?
Two people arguing.
More people arguing in Garfield Township.
Two people in a car arguing, you know, they pick up the phone call dispatch, we show up there, we, you know, we make sure that nobody assaulted each other, we try to resolve it the best we can, and we go our separate ways. Happens a lot.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think it's important that you note, too, that when you're looking at the line that you're seeing, eight hundred and sixty in Garfield Township, that's Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Department's calls. The total number of calls in twenty seventeen for Garfield Township was like nine hundred and fifty, and the city of Traverse City was nine hundred and four. You have to, you have to add up the three different, three different agencies.
Yeah, and another thing, too, is these are cases, you know, calls for service that turn into an investigation, and we actually sent it to the prosecutor for review. These numbers are quite low compared to what you're going to see on the next page, which is actual calls for service.
Yikes.
If you start at the top, if you start at the top of the first page, that is a summary of the prosecutor's cases that they reviewed by location. So, Grand Traverse Sheriff, Traverse City Police, MSP, you know, in twenty eighteen, you can see in that very first column on the left, five hundred and eighty-five cases submitted related to crimes in Traverse City. Garfield Township, seven forty-eight, and those were by us and MSP. So these are just cases reviewed by the prosecutor, and it talks about which ones were declined, which ones are approved, felonies and misdemeanors. As you travel further down in the middle of the page, you'll see calls for service, and we'll just use twenty seventeen as an example. In Garfield Township, our office responded to nine thousand five hundred and ninety-seven calls for service. In twenty-seven, and that included, you know, three thousand roughly criminal... for service in '27. And that included, you know, 3,000 roughly criminal, almost 5,000 noncriminal, and 1,000 traffic crashes. The good thing is that the noncriminal, in my opinion, you want the criminal category to be a lot lower than the noncriminal. Those are the people at the mall in an argument and you're, you know, you're making sure he's okay and you leave. And I, you know, I present stats to the township every month and I see that the noncriminals always seems to be higher than the criminal, which is what I want to see. I want to bring the criminal down as much as I can. And I think a lot of the noncriminals is just society and human nature and it's going to require our response in some cases. Moving further down, in 2014, we developed and implemented a program called Sheriff Manager. That was a sheriff's idea. As you know, he's big on improving efficiency, effectiveness. And this was a program that we reached out to a vendor to prepare. And it's a way for us to track the activities of our officers, what they're doing, how long, and where they're doing it at. And, you know, along with accountability and several other reasons, we can analyze it for, you know, making improvements in efficiency. And this has been a great program that we are implementing it in our jail and also through our recreational division with Marine Division, Snowmobile Patrol. It's just a great way for us to capture what everybody's doing. And I put an example down there in the 2017 line, you know, overall, our agency had roughly 70,000 activity hours. That's countywide. And 27,000 of those were in Garfield Township alone, which was made up 39% of our activities, which is, which is pretty normal. You know, when I give the stats monthly at the township, we're handling in Garfield 39 to 42% of the calls for service. So that number makes sense to me. Switching over to the last page, actually, it's a three-page document. This is a MICA statistic that is obtained through the state police. And certain crimes get reported to the state and ultimately to the FBI. If you look at this other document that has blue on it, there are a bunch of codes, and each crime has a code associated with it. So you might see the one that's 25,000 robbery on the front page. It's called the MICA arrest charge codes. So when we have a robbery, that information gets reported to the state police and ultimately to the FBI for statistics purposes. The MICA stats that we have to provide are only a certain number of file classes or crimes. And if you look at those numbers, those are really low. And that's what I was saying. You know, we have 9,000 calls for service. However, in 2017, in Garfield Township, there was just shy of 2,000 incidences that were significant enough that they had to be reported for statistical purposes to the state police and under the FBI. The majority of our calls for service seem to be, you know, putting out fires, providing advice to people, PR events, doing follow-ups, serving legal papers. You know, we're quite busy doing that. And, you know, I'm glad that our incident numbers are that low compared to our overall calls for service. I don't know if that answered your questions or what you had in mind, but I'm certainly available to sit down and talk more in person or even answer more questions tonight if you have them. But I don't want to take all your time with numbers.
Well, I would, I would just say that in my, my two years of attending Garfield Township meetings, that I have enjoyed your monthly presentations. You are very obviously a numbers guy and you always have a lot of really good data.
Thank you.
So I appreciate you putting this together. I know that this was a lot of work. You know, I just think it's, I hope that the press would like a copy of this because I think that this is really helpful for people to have an idea of just how much you're really doing. Because I think, you know, if you haven't been a victim yourself of a crime or your neighbor hasn't been in a crime, you think, well, why do we have all these cops? What are they all doing? Well, this is what they're doing.
And I calculated that, you know, your 9,000, it's over 26 incidents a day over the course of a year.
Well, in one in four, you have to report to the feds. So, I mean, you know, there's important stuff you're doing.
Our staff is very busy. There's no doubt about it. And, you know, every day, we're looking at different ways using these numbers, how to be more effective, how can we reduce it by being proactive. So that's the importance of the numbers because they don't lie, right?
And you like it. You love it.
Well, I know that decisions are made by numbers. I'm not a math guy, but I know, you know, they carry a little bit more weight than me getting up in front of you and just talking. So there's some objective stuff.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Nate?
This exemplifies why we need the contracts for supplement law enforcement. We could not, the sheriff's department without the deputies hired by Garfield Township cannot manage.
The county couldn't do it.
The county could not do it.
No. Okay. Thank you very much. We will move on to finance. We have approval of the Brownfield redevelopment grant contract. Dean?
Yes, the, this is an agreement between the Brownfield, our Brownfield Authority, and the county regarding the funds that were committed. They're actually sitting aside in the Brownfield accounts, waiting to be used to help pay for our share of the Saban dam removal. It was initially intended that the agreement would be with the Grand Traverse Band, but we were not able to make that happen. So within the last month and a half, we kind of went a different route. And the Brownfield Authority did approve the grant agreement with the county at their meeting late last month. And we're asking for the county board to approve this agreement as well so we can complete that transaction and get the funds to the Grand Traverse Band.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Gourfallett. Discussion?
Do you know when the Saban dam removal will be finished?
Well, our facilities director, Mr. Berry, was there yesterday. They're currently, their plan is to have most of the work done with the channel this year. They will obviously be back next spring to do some upkeep and maintenance work because things will happen over the winter months. But they're currently still working, bringing the channel up that was below where the dam or the powerhouse was. The above dam channel is in pretty good shape, but they are still doing a lot of channel work. I think they're going to be pretty active there for most of this month. But obviously, by the time winter sets in, they're going to have the site pretty, pretty stable. If you have not been there, we do have some pictures, I think, that are on our website that you should take a look at. But they're still working every day and a lot of work with the channel. And it's just an amazing thing. They are managing the sediment. We do have a dam, a Boardman River Dam implementation meeting tomorrow afternoon. If you want a current update, you're more than welcome to attend. But that's, I don't know if Nate wants to add anything in addition to that or... They are working every day and they're trying to get as much done before winter sets in as possible.
Dean, do you know if the same people that did all that, that bank work and stuff, are they going to step in and do some stuff when this is all done?
Well, that will be part of, obviously, based on the time of year that we're facing right now.
Sure.
You can't do a lot of that.
Right. What I mean in the future.
But yes, they will be back in the spring. That's a different contractor.
Yep.
I mean, JobSite Services have, will have their contractor there to do that work.
But that's the goal. They're going to remediate the banks too.
Correct.
Okay. Great.
So one thing I'd like to mention, now, if we're speaking about the dam removal and river restoration, we have taken some strides to get a public awareness campaign prepared for the, what has occurred at Boardman Lake, at the south end of Boardman Lake. And is it CRA that did that? We have a billboard that we think that we should be creating and presenting at Medallie Park to let people view it and say, this is why this is occurring. I think they did a great job presenting the information. It's just a matter of us paying for the billboard and sticking it out there. We've had a lot of questions about what's happening there and why those deltas are forming. And the information on the billboard, I'm not sure it's a billboard, but something big enough that people can see would be very beneficial to have at Medallie Park.
There are a number of individuals that are part of the implementation team that are with the Grand Traverse Band, the city of Traverse City, our drain commissioner that were very involved in developing that information, Dan Devawn with AECOM. I just sit back and I'm just amazed at what they can do. But they are, I'm not, I think the finished product is pretty close to being put up so that people can, you know, take a look at that and they will know what's happening and why it's happening.
Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Administrator's update. Nate?
So only one real issue or thing to report. We had a, as you know, we went, changed security firms from DK Security to STT for our courthouse security. And fair to say that the changing of the companies changed the way the procedure of screening at the intake areas has been done. The policy that DK has or had is the policy that STT incorporated into their screening procedure. I think it's fair to say that DK had a different way of providing the screening services. STT is a little more rigid in the format of the screening. They adhere to what the policy says, almost to the T. That has led to a complaint, so to speak, from a local attorney. She wrote to the courts. The courts gave that complaint to me because we are the holder of the agreement with STT. We have been working on that and we ended up meeting with the local attorney that filed the complaint as well as the local bar association president. So we are working towards an end or an agreement or an understanding of how specifically attorneys are screened at the courthouses. Fair to say the courthouses have a high requirement of security. The judges demand that. Scale, the state court administrator's office, actually gave our court system a recommendation to how to handle single-point security screenings. And for the most part, they're adhering to that. I think there's a question about the reason why an attorney can't show a bar card and come through security. They said it essentially very clearly that, in that fashion. So we met with the judges today and STT, and we're trying to come up with some type of a dialogue with the bar association. The bar association has invited us to speak with them about this security screening process. One of the main issues that was brought up through the local attorney was the apparent disparate treatment of certain attorneys, that certain attorneys got a pass and certain attorneys didn't. I think that STT has changed that, if that ever did exist. But the expectation is that if you implement a policy, that policy is for everybody. There have been some questions. We don't have a final solution yet. It was very, pointed out very clear to me today that we are the holder of the contract, the county is. The county owns the buildings that the courts reside in, but the courts are a separate entity of government and they have the right to implement security screening measures. So we're working through some of those concepts as well. I just wanted to let you know that. We did, and the local attorney, by the way, when we asked her, what do you want in response from the county? Do you want a response to each point-to-point on the complaint? She did not want that. What she wants is this dialogue that we're having with them now and have the bar association be heard, the local attorneys be heard, and us give rationale for why the attorneys have to, as an example, take their belts off. I was provided a picture today of a belt knife that the court found within the last two weeks. It was not on an attorney.
No kidding?
It was not. So I see both sides of it and we're trying to work through it. I think consistency in application is key. Education is key as well. And they have invited us to their meeting, I think, in January. But wanted...
Tom, and then Cheryl.
When is the next meeting to discuss that?
I think, I think the attorneys, our bar association invited us in January.
Oh, not between now and then, so?
Well, the courts and the county will be having conversations on a routine basis. But the bar association invited us for January, I believe.
I'd be happy to help you review that. What's the percent of female screeners? Will they have, they have a few or one or?
They do have a few. I saw, I spoke with two female screeners today. I don't know the numbers, but I spoke with two today.
So there's one always on every day?
I don't know that.
Oh. Well, I'd be interested in that too, so.
Cheryl?
Well, I had calls from more than lawyers. I also had, I had comments from process servers, from people who work in the courts. And it is, it is an equity issue because people who work within the court, i.e. county employees, do not, they're not subjected to that screening. They don't have to take off their belts and their shoes and go through all of that.
That is correct.
And that's not right. Okay? I mean, an employee is just as likely to have a knife belt as a lawyer is, in my opinion. And it's offensive to me as a lawyer because I'm an officer of the court. And for the judges, and I'm sure this is probably being driven by the judges, because judges tend to be very paranoid, as though they're in any more danger than those of us who are litigating the issues. But, you know, we're officers of the court. We take an oath. And so do process servers. They take, they're officers of the court. So for us to be treated like we're defendants coming in for an arraignment is offensive. And I understand why they're upset. And, you know, I practice in multiple courts around the state. Show a bar card, you don't, you know, you don't go through that stuff. I mean, they may wind your bag the first couple of times and then they're like, see ya. I mean...
Well, it's my understanding that the 86th District Court in Lelandaw doesn't require this degree of screening. But it is, again...
They don't have a screening system.
It's, correct. It was the building is owned by the county, but the court implements the rules. And that's where we were today. That's where the discussion center today is, who is actually going to make the determination as to what we're going to have in terms of...
Perhaps they'd like to pay for it then, since they're going to be making the rules.
I think I did bring that up today.
I think that's a good point to make.
I do want to point out, though, that the state court administrator's office did say that, you know, all persons entering the courthouse should be screened. That includes employees, attorneys, and that security and safety is an inconvenience. It's not something that is unreasonable.
And Nate, I don't disagree with that. But screening means you walk through that device that shows whether you have a knife belt on or a gun in your shoe. You don't stop and take your shoes off, take your belt off, rifle through your briefcase, et cetera.
Those were the points that were brought up, yes.
I think those are good points.
Do you want to get a knife belt?
You got one you're trying to get rid of.
Well, they took it.
Set lost and found at the courthouse.
Fair to say, specific to the complaint we received, there is an appearance of disparate treatment. I think that education and information across all security screeners, all courts, and all attorneys will solve the lion's share of that. The feeling that I'm an attorney, I should get a pass, I don't think that will satisfy this. So we have some discussions to work through.
Okay. Anything else from administration? No? Okay. We'll move on to old unfinished business, the MIDC grant agreement. That's you?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be speaking on that and I'll make it brief because I think my memo's pretty self-explanatory. At the end of the day, we've got a, we've got a better agreement. Does it, does it meet all the demands I've made? No. But is it something that administration and finance can work with? Absolutely, that we can implement. And so if you have any questions, I don't think that the grant agreement was included in the original package, but packet, but was distributed earlier this week. So hopefully we had a chance to review it. And please let me know if you have any questions. But we are asking the board to approve the grant agreement and authorize the chair to sign it.
And we did meet with the courts this week and previously. We've met with them several times in this agreement. They've been very good to work with, working through a complex new concept imposed on us by the MIDC. And they've been very valuable, they've given us valuable information, assistance through the process. But I think it's time to sign the agreement and go forward. And we are receiving bills, right, Dean?
Yes.
Yes.
Included in this grant agreement is the jail remodel that Captain Ritter was speaking about previously as well.
With the observation cells?
No, with the changes to the attorney's conference rooms. And that has to be completed within 180 days of signing the agreement. So assuming we sign that this evening, that starts the clock.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Move that we approve the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission grant agreement.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by... Moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you for all your work on that. I know it's kind of a back and forth, it has been, definitely. Okay, we have no new business. Now is our chance for second public comment. Is there any, those same rules apply? Is there anybody that would like to make public comment at this time? Once, twice? Okay. Commissioner Department reports. Anybody have anything interesting? Useful?
I will just note that we are still sending the contract for the, uh, mental health professional in the jail, back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. We're, you know, every time, every time another attorney looks at it, it becomes harder.
Too many hands in this room, I think.
That's why we screen them.
We are, we, we are trying, at this point, we're trying to sit down with CMH staff and just, just say, okay, where can we agree, let's get this done. And unfortunately, at this point though, it's, it's been difficult just trying to figure out that date when we can get together.
What's set a goal to get it done by the end of the year?
I think, I'm pretty sure that will happen.
The last revision had an enactment date of November first through November fifteenth, well...
Quickly coming to an end.
It was, yeah, it wasn't great.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to thank our county clerks for last night. Um, I was watching all of the, um, election stuff come in and I know that they were very hard at work at trying to get all of the precincts in and trying to get all of the absentee votes in, um, and get it all finalized so we could have results.
Did it go any smoother this, this time than it did the previous?
It was better than August, absolutely.
I, I, I was looking at home too and it seemed like results were coming in a lot faster to me. Maybe I was wrong, but it seemed like they were being updated on the site.
They never come in fast enough for the people who are really, really waiting for it, so... Yeah, exactly, but the people that really wanted it, yeah.
Yes, that was a great turnout, it really was.
Yeah, we had, um, over sixty-six percent turnout.
Wow, that's awesome.
And that's close to presidential, um, year results. Midterms are usually under fifty percent, so...
And I think there was a, an unusual amount of absentee as well. Sixteen thousand, was it somebody said?
Um, yeah, it was around fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, sixteen thousand.
Interesting to see next time how that compares now that that got approved for absentee for any reason.
Probably go up, yeah. Especially when people were dealing with lines, um, this time because there were so many people out voting that if they, they'll probably go, I'm just gonna vote absentee instead of waiting that line for an hour.
I waited forty-five minutes to vote and I've never waited that long, ever.
I couldn't even get in the parking lot at Westwood School the first time I went to vote yesterday morning.
So it was a good turnout and a good job by the clerk's office, so thank you.
And, and all the, all the township clerks, all those precinct workers, oh my gosh, we couldn't do it without all of them. I'm telling you, there's a lot of work involved in elections.
Okay.
What's gonna be the ramifications of people being able to register to vote at the election site?
I think they'll have some procedures in place that, um, will, uh, help. I, I mean, I have some ideas on how it, we could protect that. I don't see it being huge in our... Because it's gonna be, there's automatic voter registration now too, so...
I have a lady in front of me yesterday who had recently moved from Benzey County into Long Lake Township and she was there to vote, but she had never, she wasn't a registered voter in Long Lake Township. She knew she moved from Benzey County, but she didn't even know what township she lived in, Benzey County. So, you know, they were all trying to work with this lady to figure out where she had to go vote because what?
It wasn't gonna be there.
Under no circumstances can she vote here, so...
Well, one of the things I put, I would push is that when people move, they need to change their driver's license. It's against the law to not change your driver's license. And when you change your driver's license, it automatically changes your voter registration unless you choose it not to. So if people would just change their driver's license, it'd probably be a lot quicker.
And I think you're gonna offset, I think you're gonna see a large increase in absentee ballots. So I think you'll offset a lot of it.
Maybe everybody will need one of those big, huge machines that Garfield uses cause it, it processes like, I wanna say probably a hundred ballots a minute. Those things fly through there. It's a pretty awesome machine.
Okay. All right, so we have some current job openings that we would like to bring to, uh, the public's attention. We are al- always looking for correctional officers, deputies with the sheriff's office, still a medical examiner investigator part-time, uh, seasonal law enforcement deputies and universal aides. Uh, we do have one new job opening, which is an office manager for the health department and that, uh, closes on November sixteenth. So you can go to our website, grandtravers dot, www.grantrovers.org and check out what's available.
Is the seasonal for the marine patrol for next year?
It's still on there, I don't know.
Or snowmobile.
Yeah, it would be snowmobile at this point.
I told my wife I wanted to be a marine officer and she just said no.
I'm sure she did.
I said the coast guard training would help a lot with that, but she just won't know.
Tom?
I think I saw a listing for, opening for a prosecutor.
That's true.
Yes.
We did see that come across the email today. There is a, there will be an opening for a prosecutor. So, the judges, I think, do that, so, okay. I will, go ahead.
Chairman, I would move that we go into closed session for the purpose of discussing, uh, written legal opinion protected from disclosure under attorney-client privileges related to the Alan Hallaway jail suicide incident as permitted under MCL fifteen point two six eight, section H.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Willock, supported by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? Roll call vote please, Bonnie? And there, there, go ahead. Mayor?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Willock?
Yes.
Corflette?
Yes.
Crawford? Yes, and there will be a, a decision when we come out?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So we'll be back. Please bring your envelope with the correspondence inside and don't leave it on your desk.
Yes.
As we go, thank you. Thank you.
I would probably be the part about confidential.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I said, did see Cheech and Chong coming to Mount Pleasant December first. Seriously?
We lost Cheryl, so hold on a second.
I don't know if that was a planned event or what.
I think...
No, I saw the, I saw a sign, billboard, coming back from Alm, or from Lansing, that Cheech and Chong is coming to Mount Pleasant December first, so...
Okay, we're back. Okay. I move that we release the funds on deposit with MMRMA to allow a settlement of a potential claim bought by the, brought by the estate of Alan Halloway as recommended by legal counsel. Support. Moved by Commissioner Crawford, supported by Commissioner Gorfulet. Any discussion? No. Roll call vote, please. Mayor?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Willock?
Yes.
Gorfulet?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And...
Chairman, I move we adjourn.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. It's like...